Good evening all, thank you for attending tonight's town council meeting on Zoom. As expected, it's been a quiet month again, to be honest. But I've managed to attend some Zoom meetings, particularly when I attended the National Flood Forum meeting to learn more about the work being undertaken by volunteers to ensure more flood resilience for this town. Secondly, I was pleased to have a call with John Campion, West Mercia's Crime Commissioner, discussing the excellent work of our local police team and the issues of crime that much Wenlock residents are facing. I was invited to be on a National Association of Local Council Panel last Thursday, discussing how people can make a change by standing for election. After discussing many issues and benefits and urging people to consider standing, and I urge them to get involved in their community, just going to read a short extract of what one of the things I said. As a councillor, you really get to see and hear about the great things individuals are doing in your town, things that most people are completely unaware of. Once you realise the volunteer work that people do, you really get to appreciate the spirit, friendship and feeling of belonging it creates in the community. From volunteer litter pickers to the Wenlock clickers, to the Wenlock walkers or the civic society, these things take time and effort, but they add so much value and enjoyment to townspeople's lives. Being a councillor makes it much easier to facilitate these things, notice them, and I've really noticed this, when we've called for volunteers for projects and events. Finally, I remind you to all that Much Wenlock Mutual Aid stands ready should anyone have need of its services. The Covid rate in Shropshire is still quite high and the lockdown rules still need to be obeyed. I keep hearing more and more about people getting the vaccine in Wenlock, like the NHS for their hard work in protecting our people. Now to item two, do we have any apologies? Town clerk?
Yes, councillor Harper, who has technical issues.
Thank you. I propose that we accept this as approved absence. Seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item three, to closure of pecuniary interests, if anyone has an interest relating to this minute at this meeting, could they please declare it now? No. In that case, we'll move on to item four, dispensations. Requests of dispensation should be in writing and addressed to town clerk prior to the meeting. Town clerk, do we have any?
None received.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Then item five, Shropshire Council report. Councillor Turner, over to you.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and good evening everybody. Just a few things to mention this evening. First of all, electric vehicle charging points. Shropshire Council is rolling out electric vehicle charging points aimed at those owners who do not have the benefit of off-street parking with the principal aim of overnight charging when parking is free in our car parks. Units have to be sited together in order to contain cost. In Wenlock, situating them on street would remove an unacceptable number of car parking spaces. The plan is therefore to site them in Falcon's Court Car Park, and the provisional rollout for Wenlock is planned for June to July 2021. There are two projects, one which is 100% grant funded and another which is 75% grant funded, with Shropshire Council making up the 25%. We are going to receive the 100% granted units, as I understand it, and Strathclyde University is currently testing the method of billing the user for charging their car. Please don't ask me a question about that because I don't know. For those who choose to charge their electric vehicle during the day, normal parking fees will apply in addition to the charging fee. The local plan reviews, the next thing. An update has been provided by the planning policy team on the revised provisional timetable for the local plan review following the closure of the extended consultation period. Submission of the local plan to the Secretary of State will take place in July 2021, and in May 2022, that is when the inspector's report is expected. And it is expected that Shropshire Council will agree adoption of the plan in July 2022. So we're still a long way out from that coming to a close. Next is the former youth club building in Station Road, which is now occupied by Scouts. The land adjacent to this building in Station Road is now on a Shropshire Council general maintenance contract, and I understand the vegetation was cut on the 18th of February, and I'm anticipating it'll be cut on a regular, not necessarily frequent, on a regular basis in the future. You wouldn't believe how much effort it's taken to get that done. Last month, planned changes to curbside waste collection. Last month I alerted you to the change in curbside collection day, just a reminder that this will be effective from the 15th of March, that's a week on Monday, and that residents will receive a flyer if you haven't already had one, and a new calendar before then, and there are transition arrangements to make sure that those who are going for the best part of three weeks don't end up with three weeks rubbish. And finally, I've held 50-odd advice surgeries over the years, and I'd have held 60-odd if it wasn't for the coronavirus pandemic. The museum in Much Wenlock will not be open until May, so I will not be holding the advice surgery I'd planned for at the end of March. However, I am at the end of the telephone or email if anyone has any need for assistance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Turner. Town councillors, any question for David at all? If not, I'll thank him for his support. Thank you very much, councillor Turner. Item six, police reports. We've got both PC Jess Henley and Stephen on the call. Over to you.
Thanks ever so much for having us back again. I take it the reports come through to everybody already and everyone's had a chance to have a read?
Yeah.
Yeah, fab. Just further to that, really, what we've been trying to focus on, we've had quite a few speed complaints, so we've been out with the speed gun doing surveys and enforcement. So I just wanted to emphasise to you guys that if there are any areas in particular that you want to highlight, please do feed it back either through the town council or straight to us, and we'll do our best to target those areas. The weather's been a bit kinder to us now, it's not so pleasant to stand out with a speed gun when it's sheeting down with rain, but in the fairer weather, we're determined to be out there a bit more frequently. Is there anything else?
No, did they want to know about Covid numbers?
I think they're on here, I think somewhere. Are there any questions for us this month?
Councillors, any questions to the police at all? No, doesn't look like it.
Brilliant, a short, sweet beginning. If there's anything that can be obviously fed through to us via our email address if needs be, all right.
Thank you so much for your reports and coming on tonight, we really appreciate it.
Right, no problem.
Thanks Jess and Stephen.
It proves they look after us well, Chairman.
It absolutely does, they are, we have an excellent police service, police team here that will look after us very well. Then item seven, public session, I think I've got two requests to speak. I've got one from Arthur Hill, Mr Hill, would you like to go first, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Recently, I've been going through some of my father's archives of 40 years of plus of local government service, and I came across the 1991 report of the bypass for Wenlock, the A4169 and the A458 out as far as Walton Grange, and a firm called Scott Kirkpatrick did all the work on this, and they got to the final drawings, which were presented to the Shropshire Council as was in about 1994. Now, that actual episode failed on three accounts. One was, it was in direct competition with the Hodnet bypass, which as many of you will know was done. Whether it had anything to do with the locality to the Lord Lieutenant of Shropshire, the Queen's representative at Hodnet Hall, I couldn't possibly comment, but that was successful. The second one was, there was not enough council funding at the time, and this was the main way of getting money for projects like this, once they'd done the Hodnet pass. And the final thing it failed on was the cost benefit ratio was just 0.3% below what it ought to be. Now, the interest in this, to ask you to think about resurrecting it, is, one, all the issues on the Gaskell Corner, second, issues of our inner ring road where it would take everything around the outside of the town, sorry, Chairman, and third, Shadwell traffic, which comes up later in your agenda, and also now, we have the builders' traffic and extra traffic. If you think 1993, the traffic from Telford was probably a lot less than it is today, excluding the pandemic, so you know, all these figures would help add up. It also, Chris Boden and I were looking at the map, it would also help tremendously the flood alleviation because it passes through an area where we've got major problems at the moment, above Oakfield Park and that area there for flooding. So the final thing, Chairman, is funding for this could now come as part of the builders' project, make them pay for some of it. Department of Transport, there is now a new initiative called CABA, which is catchment flooding details, and the Shropshire Council initiative with Biz for flood resilience in the town, which we could hook on to. So Chairman, that is something that I would like you to probably consider and look at when your debate about the Gaskell Corner, because it is a possible solution.
Thank you. We've exceeded the three minutes, thank you. We will consider that when we look at the Gaskell Corner later in the meeting.
Could I just ask if Arthur could share the consultation with the report from the structural engineers or whatever, whoever designed it?
Scott Kirkpatrick designed it, and I've got all the finished drawings and everything, that is all I've got. The rest is within the county council minutes, which I presume is still available to you. I've got my father's notes on it.
I was just wondering whether you could share it with Transport Group, Russell?
I might be persuaded to.
Well, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr Hill. If we're happy to move on to the second request to speak by member of the public, which is Jacqueline Walters. Walter, sorry. Hi Jackie. I think she's sharing a screen with councillor Walter. Over to you, Jackie.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Please turn to page 16 of your minutes, where you can see what is expected of Much Wenlock Council in helping to achieve plastic-free status. I belong to the environmental group at Holy Trinity Church. Separately from this group, we have joined Surfers Against Sewage. This is a marine conservation charity working with communities to improve water quality. More recently, Surfers Against Sewage have turned their attention to battling the new sewage, plastic pollution. The litter pickers in Much Wenlock tell me that 30 to 50% of the litter they pick up are plastic drinks bottles. There are five Surfers Against Sewage objectives to work through before you call the town a plastic-free community and receive the award from Surfers Against Sewage. This is an ongoing process, as we don't just stop when we have worked through the five objectives and received the award. So, as councillors, what do you need to do? The main thing is to lead by example and raise awareness of plastic pollution. You will need to check all council premises, make a list with my help if you wish, of avoidable single-use plastic items. You are asked to set up a working group to examine the options to reduce avoidable single-use plastic. The church has an environmental steering committee, they have meetings approximately twice a year, we need a representative from the council to attend. It doesn't really involve the council taking on more work, it just involves you publicly supporting the campaign and leading by example. Plastic Free July is our next campaign. So what I am asking you to do is for a councillor to propose a motion to support plastic-free communities, where you, one, lead by example, where you pledge to get rid of single-use plastics, two, encourage plastic-free initiatives, three, have a councillor representative attend our steering committee. Then this is seconded and voted upon. If this goes through, then our first objective is completed. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Mrs Walter. Councillors, any questions at all for Jackie? No, then I'll thank both members of parliament for speaking tonight, and we'll consider what they've said at the relevant items on the agenda. Thank you very much. Item 8A to the minutes, to approve and adopt the minutes of a town council meeting held on the 4th of February 2021. Councillors, if you can get your minutes up, and please let me know if there are any inaccuracies.
Yes.
Councillor Holliock?
Yes. I propose we adopt minutes of the town council meeting on the 4th of February.
Okay, we propose that there are true and accurate record of the meeting. Councillors, can I have a second, please? All those in favour? Minutes approved. Item B, to adopt the minutes of the planning and environmental committee held on the 12th of January 2021. Councillors, please check the minutes for accuracy and then I'll look for a proposal.
Since we've already approved them in planning guide, I propose that town council back that proposal, let's adopt that.
Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you, minutes adopted. Item nine, town clerk's report. Trudy, over to you.
Yeah, well, I've provided a written report for councillors, and I don't know that there's anything, I haven't got anything particular additional to add to that, I don't think, unless councillors have any questions on what I've written.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, sorry, councillor Holliock?
Yes, could I just ask the town clerk how they're progressing for the development of the strategic plan? How much further have they to go? It's been going for a long time.
I know, I'm very conscious that that's been on my list for ages. Well, the problem I have is that there is just me, there isn't a working group looking at this, and so it's a matter of me trying to pull something together. Councillor Harper did help me a bit with, there are several things, there are the critical commitment strategy and the action plan and so on, that I'm reviewing for the finance committee, and then I've got strategic plan on this report, so that's why I've just tried to put them all into the finance and asset management, really, so that at least I'm only reporting this to one place, my progress or lack of it. So I am aiming for that to come to the finance committee on the 23rd of March, and then you can obviously have a look.
There used to be a committee working on this. A group of, I think three of us were working on it. I don't know why it's gone to.
No. Neither do I.
There wasn't a property and assets management committee we've got, isn't it? Were they not supporting you, perhaps not?
No, I don't think so. I mean, a while back, I asked councillors for their views on priority projects and so forth, and you looked at that a bit, but we've not really, it's something that's been instigated by our previous internal auditor, and the current internal auditor doesn't seem too concerned. I mean, obviously, it would be helpful for the council to have a strategic plan, or to update the action plans and the documents that you do have. So I am working on that, and I apologise for the tardiness.
No, I don't expect you to apologise, I just thought I ought to ask.
I know, I know, I've managed to get a few things off the report this month, but that one's still sitting on the report shortly, so.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thanks councillor Holliock. I meant to mention it in my chairman's welcome, but completely missed it, but it is listed on the report to remind me that our nomination for Thomas Quinn for the High Sheriff's Young Person Awards has been accepted, and he's going into the finalists, which are, it will be livestreamed in two weeks' time on Facebook, on the High Sheriff's Facebook account, and he may well be a winner, but our recommendation of him has been accepted and he will be included. Whether he wins or not, he'll still be mentioned for his hard work.
That's wonderful, absolutely super.
Well, thank you very much, town clerk, for that report, and we'll move on to item 10, nominations for mayor for 2021 and 2022. It's important to mention that there is an election coming up, it will be very soon that we will end up in, well, just under, just under two weeks, we'll be in Perdah, but, and it may be, though I'll be sad to say, it could be a very different town council, and therefore, having this nomination in tonight does allow for some planning for the new council and the maymaking and everything else, so. Councillors, your views, please? Councillor Holliock?
Yes, Chairman, I would very much like to produce, oh, sorry, just let me take it off, that was most inopportune, I'm sorry about that. I'd like to produce, to propose, sorry, councillor Daniel Thomas as mayor for the ensuing year. I have a very good reason for this. First, during the very difficult time this year, he's proved himself to be a good leader and a super-chairman. The meetings don't go on too long, which is excellent. I imagine he came into the job believing it would be a wonderful time in his life, always to be remembered, and I'm sure he will always remember it, but not for the right reasons. However, due to the pandemic, he's produced, he, sorry, he has proved his community spirit in Much Wenlock, and I consider, if he is willing, a second attempt would be worthwhile, with the community spirit strong and fun and great initiatives will be on the horizon. Also, Dan has youth on his side, and that is one thing Much Wenlock needs, young leadership. Therefore, I have no hesitation in nominating councillor Daniel Thomas as mayor of Much Wenlock for the ensuing year.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Holliock. Councillors, your views, please? Someone else might like to do it, of course, councillor Jenkins?
Well, I'd like to suggest and agree with all that councillor Holliock has said, and second her motion. I'm far and away, I think, the youngest of this group of old crumblies. Sorry, there are Matt and Natalie, and I shouldn't include them, but yes, you have a proven track record, and long may it last.
Thank you very much, councillor Jenkins. Councillors, if anyone would like to propose anyone else or say anything, no, I've got a proposal, I've got a second.
Yes. It's all yours, Daniel.
All those in favour? Motion carried, thank you very much for that vote of confidence, and I hope we can attend more things and at least meet in the Guildhall, but thank you very much. Moving on to item 11, nominations for deputy mayor for the next year. Councillors, your views, please? Councillor Hill?
Well, I haven't prepared a nice speech, I'm afraid, but I think I would propose councillor Duncan White. He hasn't been on the council very long, but again, he's proved his worth, he's enthusiastic, and I think he has the ability to be a support for you, and I think he will help get things done. So I propose councillor White, if he's happy to take on the role. I haven't asked him yet, so I don't know.
Thank you councillor Hill, councillor White?
Yeah, yeah, well done, happy, thank you very much, Mary, very kind of you. I would take it on with enthusiasm.
Good. Well, you can wear the chain, I've only worn it once this year, so I'm sure you'll have a job wearing it much more.
Thank you very much. Councillor Holliock, your views, please?
Yes, I think it's a very good choice, Chairman. I think he'll be a wonderful backup for you. He's got to know Wenlock very quickly, he's made his mark in Wenlock, and I think he'd be absolutely good, he'd be a wonderful substitute as well, that's not a very complimentary word, a wonderful second for you when you're working, because I think he has more free time probably than you'll have, if he has any, but I would definitely second the motion.
Excellent, thank you very much councillor Holliock. Councillor Whitman, your views, please?
I'd like to support the motion, Chairman. Very much support councillor Duncan White being your deputy, excellent choice.
Thank you councillor Whitman. If councillors have any other views or would like to propose anyone else, or then, if not, we'll go to vote. Okay, then, councillors, all those in favour? Motion carries, congratulations councillor White. So thank you very much, and then on to item 12A, Ironbridge Power Station. To note that additional comments have been submitted to Shropshire Council, Telford and Reeking Council, and Highways England with regard to proposals for the Gaskell Corner associated with the power station development. We submitted a 13-point response, which was co-drafted with the transport group and the town council, drawing attention to things like the Visium model and our concerns with it. I propose that we note that that has been sent off.
Yes.
Seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. Item 12B, to consider whether to submit an additional spoken representation to Shropshire Council for consideration at the special planning committee meeting to be held on the 23rd of March 2021. This is where we would actually, if I understand correctly, we would submit a report, and the report would be read out by the appropriate Shropshire Council officer, as I understand it. Councillor White, your views, please?
Yeah, I think this is an absolutely golden opportunity, I've listened to what Mr Hill has had to say, and I've also had the benefit of seeing the plans, which, being new to the town, I never really quite grasped what the idea of the bypass is and where it would have gone. Having seen the plans, they look excellent, and it's a shame that we missed out in 1991 and 1994, but I think this is an absolutely golden opportunity to go to the council and say, okay, you're going to obviously build all these houses all around us, we've got increased use of the Gaskell Corner and all the roads around Much Wenlock already, this is going to just add to the problem, so this is our chance to get in and get a bypass. If anybody, any members of the council would like to see the plans, I have taken a photograph of them, it's not very easy, but I've done it, and I'm more than happy to share it to you by email if you'd like to see them. It was very informative for me, and I think we really do need to seize this opportunity.
Excellent councillor White, thank you for your contribution. Councillor Whitman?
Yes, well, I'd very much like to support councillor White on this issue, Chairman. As you know, I was very keen on this bypass. I wasn't a county councillor in 1991, but I was a district councillor for Much Wenlock, and we fought very hard to get this bypass at the time, and as Mr Hill said earlier, the Hodnet scheme just beat us to it, for whatever reason, I'm not sure now, but I think, you know, the... But I think, you know, that the plans for a bypass are there, it's quite clear. I think if we could get a contribution, obviously, there's going to be some quite big development at Builders Power Station, no doubt about that. If we could get, I'm sure we could get a contribution from them, Chairman, towards this. I think we should press Shropshire Council very strongly to bring in this bypass now. The traffic has increased. Goodness knows how many faults since. You can't do much more at the Gaskell. Whatever you do at the Gaskell Corner, you've still got the traffic coming through Wenlock. You you walk up New Road and Shinton Street at the moment, Chairman, those huge trucks coming through. It's very unfair on the people living there. I don't know how they put up with it. I can hear the stuff and I'm I'm two, two streets away from it. And I think now is the time to press for this, Chairman, with all this extra development that Shadwell and various places, and particularly the Ironbridge Power Station site, which of course, as I say, will go ahead. And I think now is the time to press very hard for it.
Okay, so you're propos-, you're both saying that we should actually, in our response to this, to the meeting, actually have in there that we would like a bypass to be discussed. Okay. Okay. Councillor Hollyoke, your views, please?
Yes, I worked with Derek Kill very hard on this when we, both on the County Council. It was a case of three bypasses, Hodnet, Ponsbury and Machwenlock. And I must say, Derek Kill worked his socks off for this one.
He did.
And he hadn't a chance from the beginning, actually. Hodnet was there and that was going through. And it was, you know, it's a pity because he tried very hard and I will support him in that. I tried hard for mine as well. But I had no success either. The thing is, I think we ought to consult local people too about it before we dive into it, because it does affect the shops quite a lot. It will be easier in some ways, but some entrepreneurs are not always very keen to have a bypass round them. And I think that is one thing we must remember to do, Chairman, if possible.
Yes, so the meeting is going to take place on the 23rd of March. And we, I was, we've obviously already submitted a report which was co-drafted by the Town Council and the Transport Group, which does explicitly mention a bypass, but does look for does look for solutions. And now we actually want to do it in our verbal representation, because the deadline's already gone for the written one. So we're just thinking, we've got quite a short time period if we do too much of a consultation about adding this into that report. Councillor, your views, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think it is essential that we do this. Furthermore, I think we ought to be have it as a policy of the council to take every opportunity. If you ever once, from my experience, if you ever once miss an opportunity to get your, put your opinion across, it is seen by people who would like to relegate your argument to, to, to one of urgency, which I think this is. And just, you know, and put it off. So I think we should take it as almost as a default that should the question be asked, we should not be asking, do we go? We should say, is there any reason why we shouldn't go? It's completely the other way around on, on this. We should, it must maintain that policy of we take every opportunity.
Okay, thank you, councillor Fivers. And councillor Jenkins?
I'd like to mention, if I can, Paul Hanafin, who has been elected the the Chair of our Transport Working Group, although he's not a councillor. And he has contacted us to say that he'd be more than willing to attend this meeting on the 23rd. I don't know whether, as a non-councillor, he would be allowed to do so. But his background of 39 years as a transport planner, both in this country and abroad, is expertise that none of us have. So I just wanted to mention that this is a possibility, if it, if it is possible.
I think you mentioned, is it possible? I mean, we've obviously got there's, there's the, the meeting on 23rd. We could submit to a report if we'd like to do that, first of all. And we can, of course, mention the bypass in there. If we'd like to. Councillor Fivers?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know whether it is constitutionally possible, but in any event, I think we should be offering the opportunity for Paul Hanafin to be going as an advisor or an observer, at least at the very, at the very least. But as far as having the ability to ask the right questions, though, it does help if you've got knowledge of the subject. And there aren't, at the moment, I think Paul is the only person on this Zoom call who has got knowledge on major road, road building works.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is probably better to discuss at item 13B, talking specifically about the Gaskell Corner and the bypass. I'm actually talking about that at the moment, just trying to.
Excuse me, Chair, we can't hear you very well. I don't know if you're moving something or if you've moved your your, but there's an awful lot of crackling. It's very hard to hear you.
From me?
Yes.
Okay. Bodies, I don't know how that is. I don't think I've done anything different than normal. Please let me know if it continues on. Thank you, Town Clog.
It's not better.
No, it's cracking. All right. Better than this. I'm going to put the headset in and see if that helps. I will look like a DJ. I'll have to apologize. At all?
Speak to us.
Say something else.
Does this help at all?
Yes, yes.
Far better, okay. Right. I feel a bit daft, but at least we're not, at least you can't hear like crackling. Thank you very much. Now, I haven't, I've lost my train of thought. So councillor White, can we come to you, please?
Yeah, sure. I mean, obviously, I suggested that we do this. I'm more than happy to go to the meeting as a representative of the council. And if Paul would like to accompany me, that would be fantastic.
At the meeting, if I understand correctly, it's, it's something you can watch, but it's on teams and we can all attend. But the actual verbal that is spoken will actually have to be a written report that we submit and we read by Shropshire Council officer. It is not like a normal planning meeting, pre-COVID, where you stand up as a member of the public or member of the council, the town council and speak. So whatever we say will have to be submitted in writing and read out by the relevant officer. So it's not about who we send or anything like that. We have to decide on what, if we're going to send something at all, first of all, which I think we should. And, and then what we actually say or who writes it. We could delegate it to the Transport Group.
Can I make a recommendation on that? We have a separate meeting, myself, Paul and whoever else wants to come. Get some words together and send it in.
Absolutely. I mean, this, are you a member of the Transport Group, councillor White?
No.
I think it might be a good idea for the, ask the Transport Group to meet, help us draft something with yourself invited. Other councillors, if they'd like to attend and consider the issue of raising the bypass or not in that writing, would then send it to the town councillors for their perusal and adoption before we submit it. And then it'll be submitted to the relevant Shropshire Council officer and read out. So I've got a proposal from Duncan White for the Transport Group and a few councillors to meet and help us with the submission. Can I have a second for that motion, please? Excellent. All those in favour? Motion carried. To the Transport Group will write and help us with additional paper to be read out at that meeting.
Could I suggest?
Yes.
Maybe you should contact councillor, our, our local Shropshire councillor, councillor Ten.
Absolutely. Yes.
Get his support, because he's on the planning committee.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. I mean, I think he, he is further down, he's in one of, attending our meeting, but it would be a good idea to send him a courtesy invite. I'm sure that's not a problem with the decision we just took. Moving on then. Item 13, Transport Matters. Item 13A, to consider a report from the Transport Working Group. Councillor Jenkins, I believe you have a verbal report for us on behalf of the group.
I do. Much of it's already been covered, as well as my preamble about Paul Hanafin, our leading light. The, we've one of the, or the first item is to do with the power station. And we're hoping on behalf of the Town Council that the additional comments will help and encourage the power station developer to contribute a proper solution to the problems caused by their traffic at Gaskell Corner. This is rumbling on, no pun intended, but we are all aware of this. Next. We've talked about the Shinton Street problems and the work, our little working group have agreed that the ball can start to be rolled, as it were, to discuss the proposals, including installation of bollards on Shinton Street. But this should be preceded by a full survey, including, if possible, a video survey to this, to determine precisely what the issues are. Now, driving on the pavement, I, I couldn't get out of my priory court place today for nearly five minutes because of a, a contraton between a lot of drunk, a driver who wouldn't reverse to let a vehicle in a trailer go past. The end result being that the car drove all the way down the pavement outside Bastard Hall and continued on the pavement down towards the old police station. So we're aware that while this pandemic continues, we can't instigate a proper survey. But the idea is that by starting the ball rolling, that if this is agreed eventually, then the, the Transport Working Group, if retained all or some of us after the election, we will be in a good position to initiate this survey. In other words, we're sort of one step ahead. If that makes sense to you. I think I've said all that I should. If there's any more questions, please.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor Jenkins. So I understand that you're going to make the preparations in case that we, the town, next town council does go ahead with the survey and it's safe to do so regarding residents. And at the moment, you'd want, regards to Shinton Street, to actually a bit more evidence to see what is going on there and the issues.
Exactly. Thank you.
Brilliant. Any questions at all for councillor Jenkins at all? Or any comments off the back of that report, councillors? If not, I'll have that report as, as noted. And thank councillor Jenkins and the Transport Group for it. I propose that we note and thank them. Can I have a second, please? Councillor White, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Item 13B. To note that a meeting has been requested with Shropshire Council officers and to consider transport issues at the Gaskell Corner. So yes, we are currently in the process of arranging a meeting with our Shropshire councillor David Turner and the relevant Shropshire Council officers and cabinet members, as well as the Transport Group and a few town councillors. Councillor White, you were talking earlier about this meeting and the bypass.
Yeah, well, I think this is integral with the part of the bypass as well. So maybe is this meeting on top of, obviously, the meeting that's going to be held on the 23rd, of course. So yeah, let's, let's ambush them and give as much grief as we possibly can. And I think the more, the more often that we do it and make a nuisance of ourselves, perhaps they'll realise that we're not going to go away.
Brilliant. Okay. Councillors, any other views or points on this? If not, we'll just, we'll note that this is happening and is being arranged.
Yes.
Can we have, sorry, can we have plenty of warning of when that meeting's arranged for?
Sorry, get Trudy?
It is already in the process of being arranged. It is a, I was asked at the last meeting to organise this. It's going to be with the relevant Shropshire Council officers, Shropshire councillor David Turner and members of the Transport Working Group. It, I don't think the council wants to go too mob-handed, really. So I did discuss with the mayor earlier today who should go along to the meeting. Hasn't quite been finalised yet.
I just don't want to miss an opportunity for us as a council. As long as we're well represented there, that's fine by me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes. But it's not a council meeting as such. It's a kind of an opportunity to yeah, yeah, consider the detail of what might be possible, I suppose. But we, we can arrange it outside of this meeting.
Excellent. I've got a proposal that we note that the meeting is currently being rearranged, being arranged. Can I have a second that we note this, please? All those in favour? Item noted. 13C, to note the response from Shropshire Council regarding a contribution towards the mitigation of the effects of increased traffic to the proposed Shadwell development. Now, I have an email that was, I think, was all in our packs regarding this. I can just get it back up. So Richard Fortune has informed us that it is not possible to secure contributions from lawful development certificate applications. These applications, where they relate to proposed development, as is this case, are to obtain the council's legal opinion on whether or not a planning permission would be needed for the works proposed. It would only be in the event of a planning application being needed and made that the issue as to whether the development would require for requirement of off-site works be considered. So currently, with Shadwell, they're rating a response to number of queries that we have raised and Shropshire Council, David Turner and the Shropshire Council officers have raised. And a decision on this application is unlikely to be made before the end of March at the earliest. So we have made the point and we have stressed the needs of a planning application in that regard. But at the moment, we can do no more. So I propose that, that we note that and seek a second, please. Excellent. All those in favour? Item noted. Item 14. To consider information from Shropshire Council regarding community governance reviews in Shropshire and to consider or not whether to respond. Councillors, it's quite an interesting one, because this town council has discussed this in the past. In, I think in September 2019, we did actually say that we would like to pursue down this route and nothing's happened with it since. Because of the time lapse, we could, we wouldn't have to rescind that decision. But would we like to respond to this community governance and look at a boundary review? And the boundary review would be looking at the boundary of where our town council ends and it never begins, if that's something that we actually want to pursue with Shropshire Council. Councillors, your views on the boundary, please? And if we'd like to respond?
Anybody enlighten me on to the pros and cons, please?
Essentially, the, the bigger, I guess you could argue, the bigger your town parish is. So, for example, we could and this is just an example, we could take, try to take on Borton. Sorry, we've got Borton, we could try and take on Brockton. And we could expand that way and we'd get slightly more ratepayers. But people of Brockton might like to stay in the parish that they're in and not come across, for example. So, but it is something that does get reviewed. And for example, in Bridge North, they actually are asked, have asked for a boundary review to take on Tasley. Because their line is that they provide all the services for the Tasley residents and Tasley pay, don't pay anything towards the cost of them. And therefore, they're asking for the boundary to be reviewed to make the Bridge North Town Council area bigger, to have more ratepayers and things like that. That's part of, part of what it is. A boundary review isn't supposed to focus on ratepayers. It's most, more supposed to focus on individuals in the areas that they feel like they belong to. So we couldn't really include consciousness, go to Shropshire Council and ask it to be reviewed, because we could get more ratepayers. It would have to be because they actually are part and feel part and use Machwenlock services and are part of Machwenlock in that instance. Councillor Whitman, your views, please?
Yeah, well, I think, Chairman, this is something for the new council to discuss. I don't think there's any, any, you know, issues like Tasley and Machwenlock. When you say Brockton might want to come to us, well, they might want to stay with, with Sandon Long, wherever they are. When you say Brockton might want to come to us, well, they might want to stay with Sandon Long, wherever they are.
Absolutely.
It's an issue. It's quite a big issue. It will happen fairly soon, I presume. We haven't had a review for quite a long time. But I think it's a matter for the new councils to consider, chairman.
Yep, that's, I think that probably does make sense. And it is, there's, it's quite a lot of work involved with liaising with the other councils and forcing that. And I think it's a decision we shouldn't make lightly. And in that regard, I quite agree with yourself, councillor Whitman. Councillor Hill, your views, please?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with councillor Whitman. I think at the time when we reviewed it, things were quite different. Bildwass was vaguely on the horizon. But at the time when it was first discussed, it was, I think, to try and even up, we've got various groups which didn't quite gel. For example, when we talked about the place plan, not the current one, the old place plan, that included satellites, and if I remember rightly, it included Cressage and I'm not so sure how much further Harley and all those communities. But when we looked at another plan, that they were excluded. And so I think that when it was first mooted in 2019, the original idea was to sort of to regularise the communities. Because as you rightly said, we said at the time that places like Brockton used our facilities but clearly didn't pay for them. And so it was quite a muddle thing and that's why I don't think anything very much came of it. Now, I think things have changed and certainly I know councillor Harper was very keen to push for Bildwass being in our parish. You can see the benefits of that. But I think absolutely this is something for the new council to discuss. It is, it is quite complicated and I think it does need a lot of thinking. Not least because I think you've got to get the communities we may be targeting on side, which as councillor Whitman has rightly said, places like Brockton might well want to stay in their own little group. But I think a new council, and that's something for them to.
Yes, you're quite right. Councillor Harper did actually like, was trying to pursue the option of the boundary review of taking on Bildwass and having that built in with us, which, but I think if, if I take it, the red the room, is that something that we wouldn't pursue with and leave it to the next council?
Yeah, absolutely.
In that case, I would like a proposal to, for that, please. Councillor Whitman?
Propose that, chairman.
Seconded. All those in favour? Motion carried. So the next town council will have, that will be something for them to consider. Item 15, Much Wenlock Neighbourhood Plan Refresh Group. To consider correspondence from Much Wenlock Neighbourhood Had Plans Refresh Group. So we've all had the letter that was forwarded on to yourselves, it was, it came through. Essentially, they've asked for recognition and to acknowledge their existence in a way. This is obviously quite separate to whether we would refresh the neighbourhood plan, they're two different things. You may not ever want to refresh the neighbourhood plan, but you would still listen to these people in this group and read their submissions and work with them. So councillors, your views on how to respond to this letter, please? Councillor White?
Oh, yeah. Well, I've got quite an open mind on this. I've already made some notes here and I put our role is to represent residents and make informed decisions. Therefore, dialogue is very important and should happen with all groups, whether we choose to agree with them or not. That's kind of where I am. I don't think we should discount any particular group, whatever they are, whatever their beliefs. We should keep an open mind and then make informed decisions. So as far as I'm concerned, we should be including them.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor White. I quite agree. Councillor Holyoke, your views, please?
Yeah, I quite agree with councillor White. We should take in people, that's what we're there for as a town council, to envelop the community.
Absolutely. Councillor Whitman?
Yeah, I agree with councillor White very much on this. We should discuss things with all groups, chairman, representing the people of Wenlock.
Absolutely. And so I think it's one thing we could certainly do is recognise that they exist. And secondly, we could, we could commit to actually reading what they send us. I mean, we may or may not always agree with it, but the least we ever do is give them the courtesy of actually reading their submissions, which they send to us. Councillor Matt Park, your views, please?
Yeah, I would agree. But I think that there is no problem in what they've requested in that particular letter. So I would agree with the other councillors' comments on this.
Excellent. Thank you very much, councillor Matt Park. Councillor Fumins?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I can't see any problem with talking about things. As I say, don't have to agree on them, but discussion is always the best way of sorting out whether anything's got any traction or not.
Absolutely. I think it does tie in very well with the Nolan Principles and the Good Councillor's Guide and in regards to what we're here to do. So in that regard, I propose that we recognise, formally recognise that the neighbourhood plan group, refresh group, exists and we will commit to reading things that they send us. Councillors, can I have a second to my proposal, please? Thank you. All those in favour? Motion carried. Excellent. Moving on to item 16, the plastic-free town. We've had our, we've got a recommendation from the Planning and Environment Committee that the town council support the initiative to make Much Wenlock a plastic-free community. And we've heard from a member of the public in public session talking about this in detail. And there is an item concerning this in your agenda packs. Councillor Hill, you chaired the Planning and Environment Committee and it was, I understand this was discussed at your meeting?
Yes, I mean, we were very much in favour of taking up this, well, to achieve plastic-free status. If you would like, we have one more planning meeting in the old, with the old council. We could look at it again if the motion is supported from the town council to see what we could actually physically do as a town council. We could start that, which obviously will carry on with the new council. But yeah, I don't see why anybody would not support it. We all know the problems that single-use plastic are causing. But we think we'll need to, you know, to have a proper plan in place, which the planning environment committee will discuss and perhaps start at our last meeting of this old council.
Right. I think that's quite a good point, councillor Hill. We've obviously, they did, one of the things they did ask was to send over a representative. And we could more, I'm sure we could absolutely consider doing that each May, that we send a representative to, as a council representative to their steering group. And I think absolutely it's, it's really important to consider things like this. And it is a big issue at the moment. Councillors, any other views on this, please? Then I'll be seeking a proposal if someone would like to give one. Councillor White?
Yeah, I agree totally with what Mary says. I think we should formally pass over back to the Planning and Environment Committee. And then every May, get a representative to come and attend these meetings. We'd be foolish not to support this. We've got to support it. It's a worldwide problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the proposal is to support the plastic-free initiative in the town and to have the Planning and Environmental Committee look at ways that we could support and implement this. Have I got that right?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Brilliant. Okay. In that regard, can I have a second to the proposal, please? Excellent. All those in favour? Motion carried. Much Wenlock is going plastic-free.
Thank you.
I don't fancy taxing Bib on the market, mind you.
Quite right. Item 17, electric vehicle charging points. To note that Shropshire Council will be installing up to four electric vehicle charging points, as mentioned in councillor Turner's reports, in Falcons Court Car Park during the summer and to consider whether there's an additional shot, if there is any more need. So currently with the one at the fire station and these four, that would mean a provision of five charging points in the town. I also understand that Brosley are getting, they're a good number as well. So we could argue that the town and the wider area is a lot better catered for than it is now. Councillors, we did look at this about a year ago or more. So with the Falcons Courts number coming in, I think that changes things. Councillor Holyoke?
We just support the motion on here that we'll accept the extra point, charging point, and that will do for now. But if we need any more.
Councillor Whitman?
Yeah, well, I think it's a start, chairman. Obviously, you're going to need a lot more in future, hopefully. But I think this is a good start. It's, you know, that's all I can say, really. And that's hope that we'll make good progress on this issue because it's going to be more and more coming to the fore, I'm sure.
Yes, I quite agree. I think it's excellent that we've managed to secure four and brings the total up to five. And I think it's good to see that progressing. Councillor Fumins?
Yeah, as you know, I was very keen on developing a couple of charging points in the Corn Exchange Car Park. I'm quite happy with four in the Falcons Court Car Park for the time being. But I think we must bear in mind that this is going to take off. You know, it's not, it is going to happen. And within 10 years, there'll be a demand for far more than four points in the town. I also want to disabuse anybody with the idea that the fire station one is public because there is immediately, and as soon as you go anywhere near it, there's a bloody great sign on the road that says fire station parking only. So it is, it is actively discouraged the public from using it. So I would think I would definitely discount that one.
Okay, I think that's fair, but I think the four in Falcons Court really will be the proper great charging points. So in that regard, am I taking it that it's something to look at potentially for the new council? But at this moment in time, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be, we're happy and grateful for the four that are coming in. And we feel provisioned. Brilliant. So I just propose that we note this and we can move on. So proposed, seconded, item noted. 18, William Brooks School conversion to a multi-academy trust. To note a verbal report from councillor White, who attended the seminar on the 3rd of February. Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, an interesting meeting. It was short and sweet. And really what they wanted to just outline to us was the overall benefits of joining this, this team basically that is being formed. It seems it's going to be the way forward nationally and that all schools at some point will be joining teams. So it's good that William Brooks is getting in early and getting in with a very good team. The other schools are the Priory, School at Wem, School at Osweastree and the Colom Primary School. Thomas Adams is the one at Wem, St Martin's at Osweastree. And the interesting thing about Priory is that it's a teaching school, so it's a hub for Shropshire. So it instantly means that we tap into resources that currently aren't quite so accessible. It also means as a team, they get greater buying power. So they can buy in peripatetic teachers, safer music, they can share teachers or share facilities, sporting facilities, for example. And I think what it will do is it'll widen the curriculum. And maybe if one particular school can't put on a particular subject, then it may well be that those pupils can be transported to another part of the team to receive that education. So there are huge benefits to be had here. And I think it's a step in the right direction. And congratulations to William Brooks for making those steps. So it's only positive for the town.
Can you reach?
Excellent. Councillors, any questions for councillor White on his report? Councillor Holyoke?
Being part of one of these organisations, I thoroughly support councillor White's talk. They're an excellent thing. It shares facilities and it's much better for the young people, too. So yes, I go along with that.
Excellent. Thank you very much, councillor White. I've just proposed that we note and thank you for that report. Proposed, can I have a second? Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, councillor White. Item 19, NOK Leaders Talk, Why Representation Matters in Local Councillors? To note a verbal report from councillor Holyoke in the above ceremony, seminar. Councillor Holyoke, over to you, please.
I don't know how this overlooked your ones, chairman, but have a go anyhow. So as I've been a member of county, district and parish councils, I've always believed that parish councils are the most important as they are part of the local community. Did you know that parish councils have a very long history? They were introduced in Saxon times, Anglo-Saxon times, and were named moose. Now, you have to take that in your mind. It's very good for electioneering. The talk I attended, named Why Representation on Local Councils Matters, was run by NOK, the parent body of SOC. The seminar was opened by councillor Peter Fleming, leader of Seven Oaks District Council and chair of the Local Government Association Improvement and Innovation Board. He stressed the need for people of all backgrounds and ethnicity to become councillors. He then introduced us to the three speakers, who would have five to 10 minutes and then all the questions at the end. First speaker was Nick Gardham, the chief executive officer at the Community organisers. He started with, the why argument is a simple one, but how is the, but how is the challenge? He gave the following quote, I believe we can change the world if we start listening to one another. Simple, honest, human conversation. What is the community organising? Bringing people together, overcome the social injustice. Listen, connect, motivate people to build their collective power. What is listening? In short, it is the capacity to discern the underlying habitual character and attitude of people to use to communicate with each other. Listening develops relationships and identifies passions, interests and potential leaders. Build a picture of people's lives in the neighbourhood. Encourage reflection and explore the possibilities. Challenge people about the way things are done. In other words, find out their views and how they would change things. The next speaker was Rachel Farrington, who used to be a parish councillor and decided things needed changing. She aims at young adults but encourages people of all ages. What local councils do is a great barrier to engagement. In other words, people don't know what goes on in local councils and therefore they sort of think, is it worth it? Is it it? Shall we stand? Identify any council business that requires fresh perspective and campaigns that can be challenged. Make sure you communicate the outcomes from people's time and input. Don't overlook it. Provide support for potential candidates and create advocates for life. The final speaker was Judealine Mickles, who has been over 30 years, has over 30 years' experience in supporting her clients in the private, public and charitable sectors. She started her talk with a very true quote. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. It is important to keep in touch, expand contacts and grow the network. She ended by stressing, keep building committees, representation in all councils. She ended by stressing, keep building committees, representation in all councils does matter. Questions were then taken after the speakers. And one interested me from an experienced councillor who said, I am being targeted by some councillors and none of the others are keen to support me. Don't let this happen in Much Wenlock, council. Thanks very much.
Excellent, thank you very much councillor Hollyoke, a very interesting and thorough report. Thank you for representing us and intending that. Councillors, any questions or views on, on the report, comments at all? In that case, I propose that we note and thank councillor Hollyoke for a very thorough and interesting report. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Thanks very much councillor Hollyoke. Item twenty, consultation, to consider a response from the following consultation and any more received. Item twenty A, self-consultation to gather views about responses to the coronavirus pandemic. Councillors, ideally we could do with two or, two or three volunteers to support the town clerk in producing a just response to this consultation which ends on the 31st of March. councillor Hill, if I'm able, I would quite be interested if you'd consider doing this as regards to, you've already collated a big amount of people who've already responded. And that might be, I know this is slightly more different, but I think it would be quite interesting to maybe use some of that information in there. So I think you'd be a great person to, to go in. councillor Hill, I don't know what you feel about that?
Well, okay, I can't, how can I refuse so near to my end of my tenure? Yes, that's absolutely fine. Just as an aside, and on this subject, we now have over 65 submissions and our closing applications, whatever we want to use this weekend. So I'll give a fuller report in the finance meeting. But yes, of course I'll help town clerk to put some things together, thank you.
Excellent, councillors, would anyone else like to be involved in helping, helping, supporting that? Or?
I propose that councillor Hill supports the town clerk because she has all the information.
Yeah. I know councillor Hill's done an awful lot of work on this and it's important that she does it, chairman. I think it's, it's a good idea.
Thank you for your, your backing.
So I've got, can I get a proposal just so we can propose that then unless anyone's got a question? councillor White, you're proposing councillor Hill respond?
Yeah, it's, it seems like the obvious choice, I'm afraid, Mary. But as long as you're happy, happy and inverted commas and willing, that would be fantastic, thank you.
Seconded, please?
Yeah.
All those in favour? Motion carried, thank you very much councillor Hill. Item twenty one, to note that her lord, her lord, excuse me, her majesty's Lord Lieutenant of Shropshire has postponed her Shropshire Garden Party. And the nominations, myself and my wife will be, our nomination to attend has been carried forward to June 2022. I, I propose that we note that with regret. Seconded. All those in favour, brilliant, the item noted. Then item twenty two, we have to receive and note the following items, which is the items listed A, B, C, D, E and F. As well as this, we've also had correspondence from the Friendly Bus Newsletter, the Home and Wig Wig Newsletter, Shropshire Hills Area of Natural Beauty Letter and the Helicopter Noise Liaison Group, which we are sending the representation to, thank you councillor Walter. I propose that we note those correspondence, sorry Trudy, have I missed something?
There was also the newsletter from the local policing team. But what I was going to ask is if any of the members of the Communication Markets and Tourism Group would be able to attend the Shropshire Hills A and B partnership meeting on the 9th of March. I've put you on the spot now, I can see you.
Yeah, unfortunately I am working that day, I think it's in the, it's in a weekday in the, in the morning, isn't it?
It, it is, yes, it's during the day, yes. Is, is anyone else able to attend?
What time is it, Trudy?
Um, sorry, I don't have it with me. I've emailed it to you twice though, so hopefully it will be in your emails. I think they moved the time slightly to accommodate another meeting. The day is the 9th of March. But if you just want to, I'm, I'm just flagging it up again. If you could all have a look and let me know if anyone's able to attend. If not, obviously I'll, I'll make, I'll make our apologies.
Quite right, it's a nine thirty on Tuesday, the 9th of March. If anyone is able to attend, so we can send a representative to.
Natalie, how about it?
Well.
I can't give you an answer now, I'd have to get response from my staff.
Yeah, thanks very much councillor Natalie Park. So I, I think, is that everything, Trudy? We're happy to note these correspondence. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Correspondence noted. Item twenty three, agenda items for next town council meeting. Members are invited to suggest items for inclusion on the agenda for the next meeting. Bearing in mind, we probably will be in Perdah. If I'm correct, Perdah does start on the 15th of March. But councillors, oh, sorry, town clerk?
I was just going to say, yes, however, it does not affect the normal business of the council. It doesn't mean that you can't discuss anything, you just obviously can't promote yourselves as individuals or put forward political views and so on. You, you can still continue with normal business, so.
Yes, thank you, town clerk. Councillors, any items to consider, if not, we'll move on. Okay, item twenty four, date of next meeting, to note that the next meeting will take place on the 15th of April. And that is slightly later than we normally would meet and that is due to the timing of Easter. So we have a bit of a break until the next, the, our next council meeting. So that will be to the 15th of April and we note that.
My last meeting.
Well, end of an era for both councillor Hollyoke and councillor Whitman.
It's a long era.
But thank you very much, now we'll go into private session due to staffing matters and recruitment. Councillors, I propose that we go into private session and members of the public, please leave us. I think we've still got day councillor Turner in there. If he's, if he doesn't go, can you, I might have to kick him out of the meeting.
Sorry, David. Nothing personal, where we are. Put him waiting room.
Thank you, and please end the recording, thank you, Trudy.